Adam Tenbe, receive report and provide direction regarding regulation of exposure to secondhand smoke.
Yeah. Yeah. It was all fine. They all booked, yes.
No, but did they want the... Did they want the...
Yes.
To quit, to make it happen?
Yes, they adopted the resolution. No, it doesn't need to be urgency, I know. One moment. I'm sorry. Just following up, making sure the record is clear on the last action.
Okay. We're going to receive a report.
Yes.
And provide direction regarding regulation of exposure to secondhand smoke.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The purpose of tonight's agenda item is to get some preliminary direction on whether the city should consider regulating exposure to secondhand smoke. And you'll remember that at a recent meeting, the couple of residents from Shelter Creek and perhaps some other locations asked for the city to consider an ordinance that would regulate exposure to secondhand smoke in individual units of multi-unit residences. And I think some of those residents are here today. So before we go any farther, it is important to note, and for everybody to know, members of the public as well, that, for example, homeowners association such as exists at Shelter Creek and other places does have the legal authority under state law to regulate smoking and to enforce those restrictions, both in common areas and in individual units, as well as in indoor and outdoor areas of those units. And apartment owners, for example, those that are not condominiums or townhomes, they also have that same authority. And in fact, you can see that the county of San Mateo has provided information for both apartment owners and for condominium associations, providing information about the benefits of restricting or regulating exposure to secondhand smoke in individual units. For your information, excuse me, there are plenty of resources available to those private individuals who operate homeowners associations or who own apartments. So California Association of Realtors and the Apartment Association have substantial information on their websites and available to individuals who operate or own apartments, condominiums, or townhomes if they wish to prohibit smoking in those individual units. So one of the first issues for the city council to consider tonight is whether you'd like to consider an ordinance adopted by the city or simply allow private property owners to regulate and enforce rules that they can adopt and are free legally to adopt. However, if the city council is interested in looking at an ordinance that regulates secondhand smoke, let me take just a couple of minutes and give you a bit of background. So as you saw from the staff report, state law does already prohibit smoking in enclosed places of business, but there are lots of exceptions. And, you know, we have a handbook here that has all those exceptions. There's about a dozen of them. Small businesses, for example, you know, theatrical productions, medical research, hotel motel guest rooms, up to 65 percent of them, so on and so forth. So there are a number of exceptions to the rule under state law that there's no smoking in a place of business. State law also specifically has a provision that says that cities can regulate smoking more stringently than state law does. So cities are free to enact more stringent regulations if they wish. And then in 2004, a state law was enacted that prohibited smoking in most government buildings, hot lots and playgrounds, schools, daycare facilities, and interestingly, in vehicles when a minor is present. So those laws are already on the books. So what have cities done over the last number of years? And as you can see from the attachment to the staff report, they've done a lot of different things. It really varies by city. Most cities, I think it's fair to say, do prohibit smoking in common indoor and some outdoor areas of multi-unit residences. So for example, if you have interior hallways, corridors, you know, meeting rooms in multi-unit residences, most cities have an ordinance that prevents smoking in those areas. And similarly, some cities have ordinances that disallow smoking in outdoor, in some outdoor common areas of those units. So for example, not around the pool, in other locations like that. Not all, but some. Most cities also prohibit smoking in parks, sports field, and service lines. And you can see from that list, you can just look at it and see which are the longest lists and determine from that which cities are generally prohibit smoking in more places. And service lines, sports fields, and parks, in addition to the state law and playgrounds and hot lots, which isn't, doesn't include parks, that's fairly common. Some cities, not quite as many, also prohibit smoking in individual units. As you may know, Belmont was the first in California, and in fact, the nation, to prohibit smoking in individual units in multi-unit residences. A few other cities have followed suit, but they all have different approaches. So for example, some have a long grandfather period, some grandfather existing residents, some don't. Some apply to multi-unit residences of more than two, more than four, more than five, more than 10. Some say there is private enforcement only, others say the city will enforce. So it's kind of all over the map as to what cities have done in terms of regulating smoking in individual units. And then finally, some cities do also prohibit smoking on sidewalks, in outdoor eating areas, and in most hotel and motel rooms beyond what the hotels and motels may already prohibit. So some cities have gone as far as doing that. And early on, Belmont was one of the cities that did much more broadly prohibit smoking in many of those outdoor and indoor areas, as did the city of Calabasas, as we pointed out in the staff report. So one question that an ordinance adopted by the city always raises is how would it be enforced? What would you do? And there are generally several approaches. One thing to keep in mind is most cities generally do not use enforcement by the police department. The reason for that is because the enforcement requires consent to entry of an individual residence, and this is a situation which generally it's not advisable unless there's a crime that's being committed or somebody has a warrant. So most cities do not use police enforcement. Instead, what some cities do is they have code enforcement officers issue administrative, which are civil citations, if they document the presence of somebody smoking in a unit. It's a relatively easy thing to do to issue a citation. It's not that time-consuming, but it does mean that the code enforcement officer may have to return a number of times to determine whether there is anybody smoking in the unit. And then it also raises questions about whether if you smell smoke but don't see anybody smoking, does that count? So there are some questions that come up about enforcement in those situations. Another approach that some cities, and including Belmont, took is to work proactively with individuals, businesses, and community organizations to achieve really as much voluntary compliance as is humanly possible. I guess that's a good way to put it. So in Belmont, because they were the first, but also in some other cities, there was an extensive outreach process before the smoking ordinance was adopted for almost a year. And there was outreach to all of these organizations. The word got out in the community. Smoking cessation programs, it was a big deal. That's less necessary now that these sorts of ordinances are a little bit more common, but some of that outreach is probably still necessary. Post-adoption of the ordinance, Belmont and other cities had a process in which the city attorney and the staff worked proactively with individuals and businesses on a complaint-driven basis. So for example, when there was a complaint, staff went out, they met with the resident individually, they met with the person who was alleged to be smoking, they provided them with information, they said, you know, we have this ordinance, we'd like you to comply. Sometimes the response was, well, we don't have anywhere to smoke. And so then staff proactively worked with those individuals and owners to set up outdoor smoking areas that were convenient for the residents. Most places had a place they could put an outdoor smoking area. Some were more challenging, but it suffice it to say, it really took a great deal of time, was very time-consuming and labor-intensive to have that approach. So I think now that these ordinances are a little bit more common, you could probably do something in the middle. But unless you're just going to issue citations and then hope people pay and comply, it's something to consider to have a proactive process that at least at first involves the residents and tries to obtain compliance voluntarily. So I'd like to close just with looking quickly at the four questions I posed in the staff report as needing a little bit of direction on tonight. One of them, the first one, was should the city prohibit smoking in indoor and outdoor common areas of some or all multi-unit residences? And that's the thing that most cities have already done. In other words, the indoor and outdoor common areas. So then the perhaps more difficult question is should the city prohibit smoking in some or all multi-unit residences? And then the question is whether that would also include attached balconies and patios. Most cities that have adopted a smoking ordinance prohibiting smoking inside the unit have also said, we're going to prohibit smoking on your balcony or patio because the smoke is just as likely to drift from there into a neighboring unit as it is from inside. Third question is should the city prohibit, or maybe partially prohibit, smoking in outdoor public places like sidewalks, service lines, parks, those kinds of things? And then finally, should the city prohibit smoking in some or all indoor and outdoor workplaces? So that would go beyond the state law about no smoking in an indoor workplace. It would also go beyond state law in terms of outdoor workplaces. What's an example of an outdoor workplace? It would be like a construction site, for example. So those are the sorts of really preliminary questions that we need a little bit of direction on in order to get something started to bring back to you. And I won't spend any more time talking about the at least half dozen or more other questions that are going to arise later when you provide some direction on those four questions. And so in relation to that, it might be prudent to consider either some sort of study session or appointment of a council subcommittee to work with staff perhaps, to kind of vet these different ideas and narrow the focus a little bit, and then bring back something in the future to the city council. So that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I think going forward, a subcommittee to work with you would help since you have extensive background from Belmont. And a study session following that would get the public involved too. But question, so does Shelter Creek have a smoking ban in place now?
Well, I'm not aware that they do, but perhaps one of the residents can speak to that when they approach the podium if anyone's here from there.
So if they don't, and the city imposed a ban on patios and things like that, who's the enforcement? Is that Shelter Creek's enforcement or the city's enforcement?
So that's really up to the city. So in some cities, for example Belmont and others, the city has the option to enforce that ordinance as the city has the option to enforce all of its ordinances. In Foster City, they did something a little different. The city council there decided to adopt a ban, but then they said if the city doesn't do anything to enforce it for 45 days, then the individual property owners or residents have to enforce it. And that may be something for you to consider. One potential difficulty with that is that then it requires the property owner or resident to essentially go to small claims court or do something that involves taking legal action against one of the residents. Generally, in small claims court, you can't get an order forcing somebody to do anything. You can only get money damages. So it's not a perfect remedy for the individual property owner or resident. And so that's why most cities that have adopted a ban in individual units have opted for city enforcement, at least on a complaint-driven basis. So the city isn't going out and looking for smokers. It's only responding to complaints that come in.
Okay. Just on a personal note, I think this is very important. I think the secondhand smoke thing is not overblown, if you will. It's a very serious health issue in and around the country, and I think we really have to address it seriously here. But I just don't want to go off half-cocked and say this is what we have to do. I really think we have to look into it with a little more research. And I would ask the council, a couple of members of the council like to be on a subcommittee to investigate that or look into this with Mark and maybe have a study session with the multifamily units and see where they sit on this. Because I think it's really important that the city do something. But if we can do it with the cooperation of the multifamily units to start, I think that's really important.
Through the chair.
Irene?
May I ask a question first?
Sure.
Mark, because we're a public agency, it takes us a while to get things done because we have to go 60 days this and 30 days that and do the ordinance. So it, and I noticed in here, I think it was Belmont that took 14 months, a year and a half, something, to get this in place. Do the multi-units like Shelter Creek, they don't have to take that long? Do you know how long they would take to actually put something in place that would be effective?
Well, that's a good question. That would be governed solely by the internal CCNRs and how the board of directors of the homeowners association operates. So for example, the homeowners association board could get together at one of its regular meetings and make a decision essentially at any time that would ban smoking anywhere they wanted. So there's no restriction other than what might be imposed in the HOA documents of the CCNRs.
Okay. I would just like to say, I agree with Jim that we need to do something and be serious about it and be thoughtful and careful. But also, I would like to urge any residents of any multi-units that want this to happen to go to your own boards because they can do it much more quickly than we can. And you have an immediate enforcement arm there that we do not. So I would just like to urge you to do that.
Ken?
Well, as the resident former smoker, maybe the most recent former smoker, I am very sensitive to it. And I believe, and I agree, it is something that needs to be addressed. And to see a child, even a, you know, even a healthy child, or even a child that could suffer from it, I think there needs to be something done. But I do also know that there are going, you are going to run into smokers who are going to be resistant to it. And so I believe that we really need some strong cooperation and negotiation and finding options for that minority who will need to find another place and understand that it could be dangerous or nuisance to the residents, but also until they quit smoking, find another place to smoke. It's just a reality that we have. And even though there are, we can put all the restrictions, you know, enforcement, you're going to run into problems. And it will take, you know, it'll take a lot of work to be able to work with them and hopefully get them to comply. I'd be happy to serve on the subcommittee.
Good. Anyone else? Marty?
Through the chair.
Yes.
I know how I feel about it. You know, secondhand smoke is a killer. But I also want to be sensitive to property owners and have meetings where we can get their input so that we're just not being the big government forcing them to do something. I am interested in also being on the subcommittee. I think it's overdue that we actually take some action, but I want to make sure that we have outreach to the community to make sure that they can voice in, and so we're not just telling them what they want to do. I want to hear and give the community the opportunity to speak up against it or for it.
Okay. We have a subcommittee. They'll be in touch, Mark. And you can sit down and work with them.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I was just going to say, I agree. All my colleagues, Irene, you brought up a great point, that there is a mechanism through the HOA to expedite that, if that's what the association wants. Mr. Medina, I would agree as far as engaging the community. Mr. Mayor, that was a great idea with the subcommittee. And so that we do not go on half-cocked. I know we talked about sidewalks and I drove down San Mateo Avenue last night or the other night. And obviously, everybody goes to the sidewalk to smoke from the establishments. So are we going to say we're not really going to do that? And then we want to not just put things in place to cause, you know, dissension, but we want to have a collective harmony and a respect for both sides? So I think it's a good approach, and it is something we need to address.
Good. And we'll try to expedite as fast as we can, although I know a lot of lead time is needed for some of these organizations, especially like Shelter Creek, where you have to sign an agreement that if something's not in that agreement now, you probably have to have a wait time before it can take effect in certain places. But all of that can be worked out. So I think the subcommittee, you can contact them and set some dates and times that we can get on this right away.
Very good.
And I just didn't know, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor and city attorney, did anybody, do we want to ask for the public?
Did anyone want to?
Any input if they're listening?
Talk to us about this, or... Yeah, please step to the podium. Just tell us your name and your street. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Francesca Lomaton. I'm with San Mateo County Health Systems Tobacco Prevention Program. We're located at 2,000 Alameda de las Pulgas, San Mateo. I wanted to let you know that our program, as well as the San Mateo County Tobacco Education Coalition, are available to provide resources and assistance as you consider drafting a potential smoking ordinance. We are also available to assist with ordinance implementation. We would like to encourage the city of San Bruno to consider a comprehensive smoking ordinance to help encourage consistency with the smoking regulations in other jurisdictions in the county. I'd also like to provide you with an updated handout of the smoking and tobacco-related policies in San Mateo County. The version in your staff report was last updated in October 2015, and this new version was last updated in December 2015, to include the city of Brisbane's recently adopted regulations. Additionally, one of the topics that you're considering tonight is smoke-free multi-unit housing. I wanted to share that in 2015, our program received seven secondhand smoke complaints that came from San Bruno residents living in multi-unit housing. Six of the complaints were from residents living in condos, and one was from an apartment. In 2015, the highest number of complaints received was from city of San Mateo residents, and the second highest number of complaints received was from San Bruno residents. Our program has advertised its availability to assist with secondhand smoke complaints in a number of ways, including through our website, the San Mateo Medical Center, newspapers, and on the coalition's Facebook page. Our program would be happy to increase its advertisement efforts in San Bruno to assist with any additional complaints that may arise after ordinance adoption. And for your reference, the phone number for filing a complaint is 650-573-3777. Lastly, in addition to considering regulation of traditional tobacco products and electronic cigarettes, you may want to consider whether the use of non-tobacco substances that are smoked in multi-unit housing and in public should be regulated as well. I hope this information will be helpful for you as you consider new regulations for the city. Again, please feel free to reach out if the tobacco prevention program or the coalition can be of assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be in touch.
Through the chair, if I could ask a question that maybe she can answer? The city attorney in the staff report stated that, you know, even though private property owners do have the power to prevent smoking in those units. And so I was wondering, I was wondering if the county has any record of any private property owner or any landlord who has adopted a prohibiting smoking in their units?
I'm sorry, as I was speaking with the clerk, I missed your whole question, but I think you are asking whether there are private multi-unit housing buildings that have adopted their own regulations. Yes, there are some that have done that, but it's not always easy for the owners or the managers to do it. It can be difficult in condo associations, for example, to get residents called for a vote. And sometimes they would rather have the city do it so that they feel like it's something that the city has requested them to enforce rather than them making a decision and causing any potential conflict with residents.
Okay. Well, we'd probably like to talk to them in any event. Thank you.
If I may, just through the chair on that point, we do have an example in San Bruno of a private property owner who has regulated smoking in all their units, and that would be Pacific Bay Vista's. So all of those units are smoke-free.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Maritza Prieto, and I am a senior at South San Francisco High School. I am a lifelong resident of San Mateo County. I am part of the Youth Leadership Institute and have been working on Project Casa for two years to advocate for access to smoke-free apartments in San Mateo County. Numerous studies have proven that smoking can cause many health issues, especially since it's the leading cause of cancer. Secondhand smoke causes the same negative health risks as firsthand smoke. I feel that this is a major issue, and my family has had firsthand experience dealing with this issue. We are currently tenants at a multi-unit housing complex, have two younger siblings, a one-year-old and a newborn baby. My family and I constantly have to deal with our neighbor's smoking coming through our apartment. Even if we keep the window closed, smoke drifts through and we inhale the smoke. My family will not talk to our landlord due to fear of being evicted from our home. I hope that the San Bruno City Council believes that no family should feel this helplessness, especially if families have young and developing children like mine. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Priscilla Iglesias, and I am a senior at South San Francisco High School and part of the Youth Leadership Institute. After advocating for smoke-free apartments throughout San Mateo County and being involved in Project Casa to create access to smoke-free apartments for two years, I would like to ask for your support for a smoking ordinance in San Bruno. I have grown up in an apartment complex, and throughout these years, I have not only learned about the impacts of secondhand smoke among priority populations such as renters, but I have also learned that people deserve the right as apartments residents to advocate for their own well-being. I think protecting apartment residents is an effective way to move San Mateo County toward a smoke-free environment. Personally, I would like to see my generation and future generations grow up in a place where they are able to breathe and enjoy clean air. Your support and consideration is vital to contribute to the future of many San Mateo youth. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Kimberly Prestiato, and I am a senior at South San Francisco High School. I have grown in San Mateo County. I am part of the Youth Leadership Institute and an active member of Project Casa. We work to create access to smoke-free apartments. After learning about the consequences of tobacco use, specifically for youth growing up in apartment complexes, I would like to ask for your support in considering this smoking policy. Having smoke-free apartments that include duplexes, condominiums, and townhomes is not only a public health issue, but a tenants' right issue as well. Because apartment units are in shot proximity to each other, the trailing several apartment residents, there is more, there is, it is important for the San Bruno City Council to consider a policy that will give residents the opportunity to say no to secondhand smoke. Thank you.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Denise Escibias. I am also a senior at South San Francisco High School and a lifelong resident of San Mateo County. I have been a part of the Youth Leadership Institute and specifically involved with Project Casa, where we work to create a smoke-free San Mateo County, especially for multi-unit housing residents. I have learned about the impacts of secondhand smoke, the health outcomes of engaging with tobacco at a young age. My dad is a smoker, and I see how his actions do not only affect his health, but as well as, no, but also affect me and my family and the neighbors. I am learning about the risks and consequences of smoking so I can help my dad and my community understand the impacts of tobacco. I believe that each cigarette should also be included in the definition of tobacco because as a senior about to graduate high school, I have seen the ways that each cigarette are easily accessible and have become a gateway to tobacco use among a youth. Youth like me who live in multi-unit houses believe that your support in considering a smoking ordinance in the city of San Bruno is important to continue to make San Mateo County a healthy community. Thank you.
Good evening. Russ Steins Reid. When I first heard of this ordinance, I, you know, I said, wow, that's great because I really don't like smoking. I actually took up running real long distance to quit smoking cigarettes. It's a very, very nasty habit. It's very addicting, and it's something that we must consider. I mean, it is something that's really hard to quit. People that are hooked on it need some help to get off of it. It's not, you know, it's not just a simple, hey, you can't smoke here, you've been smoking here for 30 years, you bought your condominium, and now you can't smoke here anymore. I mean, you know, I think that maybe you guys should do an ordinance when new condominiums are built here, when condominiums switch hands, you make an ordinance that people can't smoke in them, the HOA says same thing, you know, there's no smoking in these, when you buy it, you know it, that's it. In the situation with what it is right now, it's very difficult for, you know, I sit back and I say, well, if I walked in my house and I wanted to smoke a cigarette, and then somebody in the city said, you can't smoke a cigarette in your house, I would go, wait a minute. I just, whoa. You know, so this is where I'm going with it. So I just, I agree 100% that it's terrible, something needs to be done, but I really think you guys should think about, you know, saying where, when it was, when people are pre-existing, they've got to figure out a way to work together on it, and especially in situations where people that are younger. And with the apartment things, I totally agree 100%. Apartments should, when they rent somebody, if you smoke, if you smoke, you can't smoke in the apartment before they rent the place. in the apartment before they rent the place, and then that's the way it should always be. And then two other things, the streetlights, perhaps, you know, the $28,000 you guys were talking about to keep them running, maybe you might want to look into buying them, purchasing the lights and keeping them here because if we're going to keep them for four months, I don't know how it works out price-wise, but you might want to consider something like that. And the other thing is with PG&E, you might want to still consider getting them involved in moving forward with the other eight circuits. So, when this happens again, this is all planned out. So, when you go to repair it, you can actually repair it with a parallel circuit instead of a series circuit. So, instead of throwing bad money back into bad money, you're going in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Dubrovsky, and I'm project coordinated for Sunset Tobacco Educational Project, and I'm also a member of San Mateo Tobacco Free Coalition. In my work for Sunset Project, I receive many calls from tenants and landlords who are having a problem with drifting tobacco smoke. Many times, it is only one or two smokers who cause the entire complex to become an unsafe place to live. We know from years of experience nationwide that the only way to solve this problem for multi-unit housing is to go smoke-free. Sometimes people argue that we should just wait and let the individual landlord or the county HOA to figure it out for themselves. But I know from experience that most landlords and HOAs won't take any actions and any steps. For HOAs, it's just too complicated and expensive. It is usually impossible to get enough members to work. It can cost money to hire a lawyer to amend the CCNR. In apartment, management usually refuse to take actions. Sometime it is because management change hands too often. Sometime it is because management doesn't care. Sometime it is because the apartment is owned by a big statewide company that does not pay much attention to individual buildings. Sometimes landlord tend to tell me that they would prefer to have their building smoke-free, but they are waiting for a law. Meanwhile, this is an urgent issue for many residents. They cannot wait any longer to have to decide whether to stay or move. It is tragic situation, especially since it would be easier to solve it if the smoker just smoked outside. I see this happen over and over again, and this is why I do not believe we can wait for landlord and HOAs to solve drifting smoke problem themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I think staff has direction there.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Through the chair.
Yeah. Marty?
A couple of meetings ago, I believe someone brought up possibly banning selling cigarettes at pharmacies. Is this going to be something that we're also going to be looking at in this time? Just wanted to see if we're going to entertain that request from a couple of weeks ago.